Yeah, let's begin. Let's call to order the planning commission meeting of March 7th. It's 6:02 PM. Let's begin with any agenda amendments. People can just kind of intersperse that into any announcements there may be. I know Sue put a couple things in the in the drive folder that aren't necessarily, you know, agenda items to talk about, but they're just a little background for everyone. Maybe Sue can say a sentence or two about that.
Yeah, sure. I should so that the public is aware. We received copies of the Vernon flood hazard regulation amendments, as well as the Guilford local hazard mitigation plan. Under state statute, they're required to notify adjoining towns, abutting towns, if they're going to be making amendments. So these were warnings of those upcoming public hearings. And you could look at the material if you wanted to and comment, or the planning commission could, I should say. So typically, it's something staff will look over. You know, if we don't see any red flags, generally with zoning bylaws or flood hazard, you know, it doesn't affect us. A town plan could. But yeah, so we look it over. If nothing's outstanding, you know, we don't have to do anything.
Okay, welcome, Kate. We're on the announcement. Hey there.
Okay, sure. Sorry, I've got a kiddo that's not going in the bath, so.
Hey, that's great to have a member of the public here after many months.
Working out today or ever.
Wait your turn to talk, okay?
Okay, um, the only announcement I have is that there's a yearly appointment to be a commissioner to the Wyndham Regional Commission. Both Sue and I have been the commissioners, the two commissioners representing Brattleboro for this past year and actually previous years. I don't know how many years Sue has been doing it, but I've been doing it for three years now. And, you know, I find it interesting and important. I would maybe continue in the role, but I want to open up the opportunity for any other interested planning commissioners to maybe take a turn with that if they so should want to. If people, I don't, maybe some people haven't even heard of it, or some people may just have questions.
What does it entail generally?
Yeah, um. I mean, I think Sue can give a better description. She's been, you know, I think she was employed with them for years and then now actually is has been a commissioner for longer than I have, but yes, I'll just, let's do start us off.
Sure. So the Wyndham Regional Commission is a regional planning commission for 27 towns. It's Wyndham County, and then there's a couple in Bennington and one town in Windsor County. And every town has two representatives to the commission. They're kind of a they're not a municipality, but they do have some governmental powers. And so that's why towns have representatives. Like they're eligible to apply for EPA grants. They do have contracts with the state of Vermont, and they cover a range of planning topics. As a commissioner, the responsibility is generally to show up and be a liaison between the town and projects and things that they might have going on. They meet quarterly in, as a full commission. It's generally quarterly, and they've been Zoom meetings. I don't know if they have any intention to resume in person. It's, you know, it's a wide territory. So in the past, they've had struggles at times getting commissioners to show up to evening meetings. And at those full commission meetings, there's usually presentations on different topics that are relevant to the to the region, like the hydro power, hydro power dam relicensing, the communications district. There's been a variety. And then the structure of the Wyndham Regional Commission is that there are very various committees that do work. I've sat on the Brownfield Subcommittee. I've also done plan review, which is where they have a responsibility to review the various town plans and approve them. Tom, I think, has done project review. So this is any Act 250, Section 248. Projects within the region could come before the project review committee. There's a transportation committee, an energy community development. Brownfields is a Subcommittee of the Community Development. And so you know, they want everybody who's a commissioner to sign up for at least one committee and participate in those meetings, which are also, the ones that I'm on are really as needed. I don't know if you've been meeting monthly, Tom, in yours, but.
Some years more so than others, but this past year only four times. There haven't been many projects in the region that require that state level review and then our review.
Yeah, so yeah, so it's not it's something that this select board for the last several years has typically appointed the planning director and a planning commissioner for, to be Brattleboro's representatives. You know, if nobody from the planning commission is interested, we can always say, you know, not at this time. You know, I'm sure I would likely be reappointed and then they could put it out to the public like they do other committees, or they could have a select board member that serves on it. But over the years, I mean, it's coming out of COVID. It'll be interesting to see how they operate. But in the past, they've had legislators, you know, do a lot of legislating brown bag lunch. And so you can kind of keep in touch with what's going on at the state level. There's definitely the Wyndham Regional Plan, which has a standing in Act 250 and Section 248, which are the energy proposals, so, or telecommunications as well, so. I'm sure Tom and I are happy to answer questions.
Yeah, I'll just say. Gary, hold on. Sorry, Gary, can I just, can I just tap on to what Sue said briefly? I'm just gonna add that it, you know, it's a good way to expand one's, you know, one's purview and one's thoughts and one's range of understanding to the region as far as planning goes, but also broadening it to some other topics related to, you know, that expands kind of our definition of planning here, both geographically and thematically. And then also, yeah, to make sure that, you know, you're being Brattleburrows, you know, you're representing Brattleboro while also not, you know, trying to have a broader context of improving the region as well. That's it. What were you asking, Gary?
Oh, no, you pretty much just answered it. I was gonna ask that same question. Must have the Jedi mind trick working. I was thinking of giving a shot at it. I met with some people from the regional departments. I kind of wanted to throw my hat in there to see if there's any interest in that, to see, just to get, you know, a little experience on the inside rather than the outside to see how the operations go and how they work. So I would consider that.
Okay. Thanks for throwing your, your hat into the ring. Does anyone else have interest or any other questions?
I think I'd be interested in like a year or so, maybe the next round. I started a new job at the end of the month, so probably not. Don't want to add too many things on my plate, but definitely down the line, I'd be interested.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I, I mean, it sounds interesting. I'll just let folks know I'm kind of operating at my about my bare minimum wavelength. I, I got, I am, in August, I got really sick with a lot, like a longer standing lung thing. And then I had long COVID, so I'm kind of like barely operational. So my apologies if I'm just not involved with much anything right now. I'm definitely passionate about helping out and like learning more about supporting the housing and the tiny house discussion. But my, my bang, my bandwidth is, is, you know, the very lowest. So my, my apologies. I'm not gonna be that involved with much other stuff for a bit.
Welcome back, Dorian. Glad you're back, buddy.
Okay, well.
If I may second something, or if we're gonna, you know, do that unofficially or officially, I'm all for Gary, you know, going for it if, if that, if he has the time.
Oh, so, so what this would be is this is just a select board appointed position. So the I'm not exactly sure. If I was to, you know, renew, I don't know if the yearly appointment comes up and the whole public's made of aware of that, but, um, but since, you know, we have another planning commissioner, Gary, who's interested, I will do it, you know, write whatever letter or email needs to be done to, to then free up that position. And then Gary will just fill out the application to the select board for the relevant meeting in, whenever, a couple of weeks, few weeks, I'm not sure. Okay. Let's move on to the, the February 7th minutes. We can discuss any edits or corrections after someone makes a motion. Yep, prudence, sorry.
I moved their approval. They look good to me.
Okay, sir, second.
My second.
Gary seconds. Okay, any comments? Or changes to the minutes? Anything? Hearing seeing none? All those in favor? Raise your hand. That's everyone. Unanimous, okay. Moving on to the 6:15 item. Discussing and possibly approving the requests for proposals for the bylaw modernization grants.
I gotta get my feet back.
Good to know, Gary. Um, okay. So staff prepared this RFP, so we'll let them start it off here.
Yes, so the bylaw modernization grant is the grant we awarded, we were awarded from the state of Vermont to take a look and propose amendments to our zoning bylaws to kind of make sure that we're make sure that we're facilitating infill development and also kind of look at our zoning districts, at least in the water and sewer service areas and probably adjacent to them to identify where some larger housing projects can go. Basically, we're looking to reduce barriers to housing creation, whether it's infill, new rehabilitate rehab. And so that's what the grant's about. The other thing that we're gonna do with this grant, because it made it more competitive and it's something that staff wanted to do anyway, both to kind of support new development is to look at the neighborhood development area. That's a designation program through the state of Vermont. We have it in the neighborhoods surrounding the downtown, all the way out to Canal Street and kind of exit two. But we have the option of doing it for West Brattleboro Village, so it's about a quarter mile or a half mile buffer on West Brattleboro Village. And with this designation, there's various benefits and incentives for development. So we want to have the consultant work with us on looking at it there, as well as at the Winston Proudie campus. Some of you might be aware that they are looking to do, you know, they're doing some long-term master planning, looking at housing development on that property. And so it was suggested by some people at the state that they look at the neighborhood development area designation for there, and that's gonna take some tweaks to the zoning to, in order to facilitate that. So we'll go through that process with the with a consultant as well. We are required to do public outreach, so there's a component of the scope of work where, you know, we'd like to hear what they propose for outreach, and we want it to be interactive based on kind of the interactive and educational, as well as getting feedback. The timeline for this project is, we want it, we'd like to complete it by the end of the year. At least to work with a consultant, so we want to move this pretty briskly. The consultant will be working with the planning commission, so there might be a portion of, you know, each month or every other month, see what they propose. I think in general, we find our regulations are in a good place, but we do know that there are some more tweaks to be done. We, staff and the planning commission together did some great ones last year, but there are still some areas that we find that we struggle a little bit. And we know that need to be changed, so. I'm happy to take questions.
Yeah, any comments or suggestions from commissioners? Sue, a couple possible little, little typos. On the first page, under backgrounds, the second paragraph.
Sorry, just which folder is this located in the, in the Google, in the, in the drive? Sorry.
I can give a direct link if you want.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you. I sometimes get, I still get lost in the drive a bit.
Yeah. Here we go.
We can't bring it up on screen, Sue? No. Can we pull it up? That'd probably be easier. Would you like to see that, Doran?
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me, just as long as I can follow along.
Gotcha. I like to see it too.
Okay. All right, hold on, give me a second.
Sure, thank you. You can also drop the link in there if it's, if it's easier, whatever's, whatever's gonna work best.
Yeah. Uh-oh, something closed on me. It's gonna take a minute.
It's in the March 7th folder. In our our bigger.
Yeah. Yeah, I see you, great.
I didn't arrange it, the article items, the agenda items by folder this time, because they pretty much all just had one, one document for each of them, so it seems kind of pointless to make folders.
I'm dropping it in chat now. That link should take you right to the document, and then I'll put it up on screen here. And we should should have brought this up at the beginning, but maybe poll everybody's interest of having an in-person meeting or at least a hybrid for the next time, because most of you probably know the town has rescinded their ordinance. Okay, can everybody see it?
I can.
I don't know, might, well, my, I have those old eyes, Tom, so I don't know, Sue, could you magnify that a little bit for me? Thanks.
That might be too much.
Perfect, yeah, that's better, yeah.
So, so right there below your cursor, a few lines where there's the parentheses, both permitted and conditional. I'm kind of just stating that as a, as a landmark. But right above it, it says analyzing existing the existing.
Oh.
If, if we're, if we're perfect with our RFP, maybe the consultants will deliver a perfect.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. We don't want it.
Yeah. So you see that? Okay. And then and then later in the document, page three, funding, under the funding category. It says, I think the dates are, are wrong in that some of the dates, the, the project is expected to start in May and run through the summer of 2023, leaving sufficient time for the public hearing process. No, right above that, not.
Right above it. Yeah, the timeframe thing is weird.
Okay. But are those the dates from like the, the state's guidance and we're just.
It is. It is, so.
Is it necessary to include?
It's supposed to be summer of 2022.
Yeah. Okay.
And yeah. I can take a look at that. I can see how that's confusing. There definitely is a longer period of time to complete this work, but we wanted it done sooner. So I was, what I was trying to, there is a typo with running through the summer of 2023. That should be 2022. But what I was trying to convey is while there's a longer period to go through adoption, we want it, we want the consultant's work done earlier. But if it's too confusing, I can just put the timeframe that we're working with. That might be better.
Yeah. I mean, unless you're gonna be in communication with every single, you know, all of the potential applicants and they'll, you know, ask the question.
No, I think I'm gonna make that just clear what our timeline is. I'd like to fix that up. Meaning they start in May, we finish, you know, probably December.
Okay. Yeah, it sounds good. That sounds great to have, you know, one of these municipal planning grants, projects be done, you know, in half the time or third of the time that the other two that I've been involved with have. They'll be pretty rewarding, I think. Um, and then what's up with the final product red section there?
Oh, I thought I had removed that. That was Steve and I working on a draft, and that was supposed to be deleted. It's strikeout violation.
And then a bit lower where it talks about the selection committee, how are we gonna decide that who's on that committee? You know, farther downward, there's the weighted scoring for the applicants.
Yes, so that's, you know, if there's individuals from the planning commission, that's the way we've done it in the past, you know, I can take up to three people. So it's, it's typically, it would be like myself, Steve, and then a couple of planning commissioners who would have time to review the proposals. If need be, have interviews. I would do those over Zoom.
Should we ask if anyone's interested in that? I mean, not that they're making a choice now, but just to or maybe they're making, we're making a choice now. What do you think, Sue? Should we wait a little bit or should we just kind of gauge interest?
Hi, um, let's see, this is due April 8th. We can wait till the April meeting if people want to think about it. That way I'll know how many proposals we're reviewing and people might know what they're, what they've got time for.
Okay. Okay. Great. Yeah, no, I mean, it all, it all looks good to me. I, I liked how the wording though for extending the for, for exploring the possibility of extending the, the downtown NDA is just pretty general. Because, you know, there are some, you know, I understand the Winston Proudie is potentially a, you know, a great project to add housing. But to me, it's out of the smart growth areas, but there are some other areas that seem very eligible, like in the Clark Ave, Morelands neighborhood and Vine and Locust and at the end of Wantas to Quit Street. So, you know, it's good that we're gonna potentially leave those open for, for consideration as well.
Yep.
Yeah, I have nothing else. That looks good to me. Anyone else? Someone could make a, a motion to, to approve this.
Motion that we approve it.
All right, great. Well, I'll second it. How about we vote? Um, maybe we can get off the screen share.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, all those in favor? It's everyone except can't see Doran. Yes, okay, unanimous, all in favor. Let's move on to, ooh, we're quite ahead of the schedule. Let's move on to revisiting the parking lot and garage signage document. I'll just run through it a little bit and just kind of tell you guys what I changed or added from last time. Pretty much nothing. Does everyone have access to this or have it in front of them? Or have photogenic memory and could just close their eyes and remember?
I'm sending the link to this one now, too.
No, I, I found the folder. I'm, I'm, I'm doing, all right.
Okay.
It was just sometimes I got, I just get trying to figure out, there's a little, so much, it's great. It's a wonderful document, but I just regularly just figuring it out, and then I find it. I'm like, all right, yes, yes.
And that's the one that you and I did, right, Tom?
That's right, yep.
I think I remember.
Do you want me to share it on the screen, Tom?
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Sure, yeah.
Nothing like screen sharing.
But I'll just start saying, on that first page that has just all the, the text and kind of the intro of the document, I don't think I changed anything on that, maybe just one of the sentences under added benefits. I think I, I think the wording was just a little messy about the adding justification to re, potentially redeveloping a town-owned parking lot for other purposes, but I didn't, I didn't change the point at all. There's just some wording and I don't even remember exactly what it was, so, but mentioning it anyway. But moving down to the signage map on the second page, previously, some of those like double arrows weren't, you know, two separate arrows pointing at each other. They were just one pointing in each way. And in some cases where like one direction I felt was red and one was yellow, then I like colored it orange and I was just like, I don't, you know, then that's not in the key. There's no orange in the key, and then there's no lime green in the keys. I just divided up those arrows into, uh, into two, so they could each be accurately colored. Moving down to the signage tour, the third page, I clarified in the key on, in the right column, kind of my my logic behind the moderately deficient and the majorly deficient. The way I did that wasn't necessarily solely based on the, on, on, on the, you know, on the actual like quality or, or assessment of the signs, it like, it was, signs were categorized based off, they were put in moderate if signage was actually present, but it was deficient. And then they were, it was major if it was, the signs just were absent in the first place. So although maybe some some yellow labeled, you know, some moderately deficient signage, you know, some may look at it and think, wow, that's, that is just abysmal. I, it's still, you know, my system was just to put in that category, because, you know, my logic is that even if a sign is, is bad, a sign's better than no sign. So, and I just wanted some kind of simple way of dividing things up, so. I went with that and I hope it's reasonable. I thought it'd be useful to put that, those little bullet points on the left, just, you know, I don't claim, I don't think any of us claim to be, you know, sign professionals or to, you know, be administrators of any sign code, but I thought, you know, it's just kind of reasonable to put some little suggested overarching guidance points about what good signage is. But yeah, going down, I think through all the numbers, all the photos, I think I pretty much had gotten as far as eight or something like that. Photo seven or eight, or maybe just even six last time, so I finished the rest of them. One thing I was, I kind of went back and forth with, but in this intervening month was that I thought at the intersections of Maine with Flat, Elliott and High, I thought how ideal it would be, yeah, like in that picture, for signage to be above the through lane on the mast arm by the, by the traffic signal. But then I thought, well, there's so little signage there, maybe that's not allowed. So I checked in with DPW and I got one answer, but then, and I'm kind of misinterpreted it, but then I clarified. And then, so I removed that, but anyway, it's back. So apparently that is a possibility. But it may not be, you know, an engineered, engineering possibility, because maybe the signs, sorry, the traffic signal mast arms and poles can't handle the weight of the signs, but as of now, that's unknown and you know, DPW will weigh in on at some point when, you know, if this gets to them. Yeah, I don't know, it's just kind of self-explanatory. I tried, I tried keeping comments when they were dealing with a similar point to be, you know, identical in, in wording. But then, you know, like I kept, put things over in a note document elsewhere and then tried to copy and paste them over if they were applicable, but then so many situations varied a little bit, and also sometimes I didn't want to repeat myself. You know, like when the first instance of a good destination sign on like, you know, photo 14, I just put in bolds that all destination parking signs should match this sign. And then, and then I didn't mention that going forward for all the others. And, you know, once again, it's just the transportation center that is missing those sort of noticeable destination signs. All the other lots have it, so. Yeah, what do people think? Is there anything that's missing that, you know, that, you know, you feel needs to be adjusted or added? My, my thought is that, you know, Sue's has seemed receptive to this and to sharing it with the relevant people and departments in the town. You know, in, in the town, um, in the municipal building, let's just say, and, and seeing what can be done. So I guess what I'm looking for is, you know, some sort of statement of support. You know, just for this document as, you know, something the planning commission is getting behind and wants to, uh, wants to advance. But yeah, anyway, I'll take any.
Yeah, so Tom, I, I love what you're pitching. It's awesome. I think the biggest thing that's missing is what Sarah and what also Dad spoke about is color. Those brown pattern that was says parking, it, you know, like a stop sign is red. The brown says park, which the parking garage is brown, we know that. So I think color distinction. So I think color distinction makes a big difference too for people to stand even at night. So I think that's another thing I think should be added to that. It's very important, especially for people at night. With some type of fluorescents or something too. I don't see, I don't know if we put that on there also and mentioned that.
I, I, I think mostly I did for, for all those brown signs, which I'm calling the, you know, the wayfinding signs that are more than. You know, one turn away from the, uh, the street that has a lot. There's four of those. And, um, yeah, on all of them, I did write that they're. Non-reflective at night and, you know, they're too complex. The lettering is small. There's no quick recognition symbol in most of them. What's that?
Some of them are decaying also. They're, they're kind of like fading. As you see that way, as you scroll down, some of the says, what says parking, some of the colors like fading way off there. I don't know, let me see if you go down. A couple of them I see on there, the pub where it says parking, the color. Is deteriorating even on the hospital sign, some of them that they, I guess it hasn't been. See at the bottom, seriously, I mean, some of them, even when I went by just recently, some of them are just decaying. Are going, are going rotting, you know, getting, um, bad.
Gary, could you point to one, the only one that I, yeah.
Well, that one there.
Yeah, that's.
We missed a couple ones. There were a few that when I did my driving and walking. That are noticeable, but we, like I said, we, we covered the areas that were visceral that people use mainly. But there are some other spots that I haven't seen some up going, coming from West B pointing to. Rattleboro saying this one side says possible, okay? Um, so I think what I'm going to probably do is take some more shots for you for some other sides of West B and coming from. Uh, Putney Road signage. That denotes and dictates where certain things are supposed to be in Brattleboro or if the sign is down or sign was used to be there. Whatever reason, so there's a lot of other little. Thing, I see, but you're expounding on just the main issues, just. The pub, I think it's more visual for people, like I said, in the day as well as at night.
Yep. Yeah, Gary, it sounds to me like you, you're starting to bring in some, some signage that is, uh, um, you know, expanding beyond parking. Signage, yeah. I mean, I think that's worth, definitely worth considering. I'm, I'm trying to keep this just limited just to the downtown.
Well, it, it's even just for parking too. Like if I come down Canal Street, it says parking. Some of the signs are either hidden or small.
Oh, so you're talking about the street parking? Yeah, yeah. So I'm trying to keep this on the towns. Um, you know, pay per hour facilities, the, the ones that are actually properties, you know, lots in the garage. So. I think that's all, you know, worthy of considering. And so, you know, what I'd like to do is see. See how the, um, you know, influence of this document pans out. And, and now how, if it gets implemented and then. At least, you know, starts to, and then, uh, and then maybe start working on some of those. I'm, I'm open to that.
We can expound.
Exactly. Good word. Sue, your hand was up earlier. I don't know if it was. I mean, okay.
You know, it was just the same reaction that, um, this was really about the downtown parking issue with some of the other signage that Gary was pointing out. I think we should handle separately.
Yeah, good points though.
Absolutely.
Is there anything? People kind of felt good. There were a few comments, you know, last time, few, few people felt good about how it was going then. So, you know, I didn't. I've only just, you know, added to it and fin, you know, finished it more or less, so I haven't changed anything. From what people saw yesterday in a sense, so I'm sorry, last month in a sense, so.
Now, Tom, are these going to change once the Amtrak? And the bridge goes in, so they're pretty much, a lot of the signs is going to pretty much be updated, you know?
I suppose the, the ones on Bridge Street may. Yeah.
I'm not even sure there's still going to be public parking down there. I, I don't think it's going to change. I mean, you know, some more wayfinding stuff might, but not in terms of the public parking signs.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I see Doran's hand up.
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna say the, uh, the unification of those signs seems pretty common sense and. Even if they were not necessarily on the crossbars, uh, over the road, um, there definitely seems to be some very simple places. Uh, throughout downtown on already, uh, established poles to be able to put a few more, uh, parking signs. Uh, someone who lives directly downtown, it, uh, it's, it's great. People would be directed towards the parking garage. And to alleviate some parking downtown. So, yeah, it seems like in all the unification and that it seems pretty common sense and it seems like you've done a really nice job of. Um, making that case.
Thank you. Sue, do you want to, um? I think you've touched a little bit in an email to me about what, what, you know, you might be able to. Um, get going with this document, but do you want to? Say a bit about what, when it leaves the planning commission, what? Assuming.
Yeah, I figured, um, I would first take it to, um. Probably staff, like bring it up at a department head meeting and, and just see where the town manager, you know, if he wants to take it to the select board or whether. Prefers to act on it. Um, so that's, that's kind of, we could go straight to the select board if you prefer. We could take it there. They'll probably want to, you know, we could ask to be put on an agenda. Um, to discuss it, so it's really. Really your preference. I didn't, I didn't fish around too much as to what his preferred method might be, um, just because I know it wasn't finalized, but. I'll definitely follow up tomorrow if there's any action taken tonight.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I think I'm, I think it makes sense to me just to, um. Show it to, you know, town administration and DPW and see what they think and. And then go from there, you know, because they're the, they're the professionals or the, the. Kind of the. The testing, I don't know what I'm trying to say. I know what I'm trying to say, but I can't say it. Staff is a very good kind of testing ground or reviewer of, of things before they get, you know, to the select board, not necessarily with. With all proposals and ideas, but I think, I think that's a good way of doing it. Okay, should we, Doran, your hand may still be up from before, but if not, speak up. Um, okay. Yeah, would, would people? Um, I think to wrap this up, maybe it, it would be good to just have a, um, a vote on supporting it on, you know. Passing it along to. I don't know what the right verb is, but I don't know, passing it along to. To the town. To consider and act on. Maybe that's some, yep, prudence.
Um, I knew that the, um, planning commission, um, endorse this, um, this report and. And ask Sue to bring it to the department heads and hopefully see some implementation.
I second that.
Yeah, well said, better than me. Okay, um, let's vote. Let's start with, uh, the eyes. If you're an eye, raise your hand. Okay, and Gary? Uh, hands up. Okay, great. That's unanimous as well. Great. Okay, let's move on to the housing action plan. That has been finalized. It's all, um, completed. And, um. It's been put in the drive folder for us all to have, um, read in advance and, um. They have a series of recommendations and strategies, which is, you know. The point of this agenda item is for us to consider and, and see how it may. That what implications it may have for our future work and what we may want to focus on. Um, but maybe Sue, if you want to. Would give more context to that.
Yeah. Sure. Um, and then I'll pop it up on the screen as we talk about it. So, um, this was our major planning grant. Um, product from the last year. Um, to do this project, several of the planning commissioners, um, Dan, Kate, Doran. Sat on a steering committee. Um, we also had a steering committee, uh, steering committee membership from. Various housing and some social service organizations, um, private developers, BBCC. Participated Wyndham Regional Commission, um, groundwork Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust. So it was a pretty, a banker. Um, was on the steering committee. So it was a pretty broad committee. That kind of, um. You know, the work was brought before them, the findings, the, to kind of review before we took it public. Um, they helped. Uh, give direction to the survey. Um, they helped identify and really push out, um. You know, the opportunities for public feedback. Um, and engagement and the, and the survey as well. So, uh. Basically, um, we're looking at a need of five hundred housing units. You know, immediately, um, we are short five hundred units. Um, and this number is based on projections. And demand. Where they look at projected household growth, which for Brattleboro has historically been declining, so that, that's not a major driver of. Um, new housing growth, the current, people who, you know, who are living in situations that are currently not ideal, so. This might be more of your younger, you know, eighteen to thirty-four year olds who. Maybe are still living with parents, um, or in some other sort of maybe house, housemates, roommates. Um, kind of situation. Um, a need to replace older housing stock. Um, and then people looking at people who live, who work in Brattleboro but live elsewhere and. With the idea that a certain number of those people might actually want to live in Brattleboro closer to work, but can't. What this demand number doesn't look at is in migration. So that could be, you know, anybody. Um, could be the refugees, it could be people moving from cities, uh, for climate change or political reasons. Um, that, that's harder to quantify. So this five hundred, approximately five hundred units that are needed is a conservative, conservative estimate. Um, and of those projected units, there's two hundred twenty-nine rental units, um. Projected as the demand and two hundred eighty-nine owner occupied units. Um, so some of the findings from the report. Um, is that we, we generally, we've had a stagnant population, but a shifting demographic. So we have a lot more single person households. Um, than before. But the population is generally staying the same. Um, we have a need for affordable rental units. We have a lack of new housing development. And we have limited housing options. So I'm thinking that none of this is necessarily a surprise if you've been around town for a little bit. Um, and you've kind of just observed our housing, um, shortage. And the one thing that I want to say about. You know, the, the report indicates there's a need for. Um, smaller units because of this, then growth in single person households. Um, it reports a real need for affordable units. Um, but that's because it's based on what's here. And so, you know, there is this other thought that, well, if we, if we had all different types of units, both. Market rate and different size units, then maybe we would have larger households, uh, that lived in Brattleboro. So, um, that's just kind of a real brief overview of the findings. Um, there's lots of other stuff in there. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, I would encourage you to. Um. And then basically there were four goals that came out of the report. And they both work, they work on both the supply and the demand side of housing. So, um. One of the first goals is working with developers. Um, then the second goal is to create new funding sources and strategies to create and rehabilitate affordable and middle income housing. To support residents in finding and retaining housing and then boosting capacity kind of throughout the community. Monitoring housing issues, communicating needs, building capacity and collaborative solutions with partners. So those are the four goal areas. Um, let me see if I can. Share my screen now. These are the goals and priority strategies and then the, the plan also kind of digs down a little deeper and gives some tactics, uh, that we could pursue. Um, what's clear is, you know, the market isn't working. Um, it's not creating new housing. It's not just a Brattleboro problem. It's, it's a Vermont problem, um, and it's a national problem as well. Um, so things like goal number two, creating new funding sources is actually, um. I, I'm pretty excited when I look at what's going on in the legislature. It's, it's only in the Senate right now. I think crossover is soon and then. You know, whether it makes it, um, into legislation, but there is some funding there for. Um, supporting homeowners, um, in creating accessory dwelling units and, and rehabbing, um, units as well, so. Um. So, you know, there are some things going on at the state level, but maybe there are some things that we could be doing locally. And when I say we. It's clear from this report that it's not really just all directed at the town. It's also at partners. Um, and in some cases, the town may not be the best entity to be. Um, you know, the lead on some of these strategies. And so that's why it was also important to have. A broad steering committee of, of people who are in the housing. Um, world. Um. I think I will stop there. Gary, did you have a question?
Yeah, it's just two quick questions and, um, it's, it's, I guess it's food for thought, not just for myself, but for everyone else. One, is there anything dealing with cooperative owning in that sense we spoke about and also B. Now that this war is going on, there's going to be a lot of shift changing and a lot of things. Have we considered that impacting those in? With the cost and with monies? The things are going to start rising, as they said, it's already started already with gas, so.
Yeah.
That being a strain on a lot of things economically. That's going to make a major impact and it may be some, but we may be taking some people in from Ukraine.
Yeah, so, um, well, obviously it doesn't account for in migration, um, so no, you know, it doesn't specifically. Address the war that's going on. However, and, you know, they were aware of that we were becoming a refugee resettlement community at the time. So, you know, but again, that's in migration, so. That hasn't really been factored in. In terms of the economic, the, the price, you know, of supplies and, and stuff like that, that. Also wasn't really factored in. Um, it doesn't change the need for the number of housing units that we need to kind of meet the current demand. Um, it certainly makes it more challenging, uh, with these costs rising. And trying to figure out how to, how to make it affordable, because we definitely need affordable housing in the community.
You're right, Sue, and also with the gas prices going up and shipping as well also. With, uh, materials and with things. I was just watching it out on the news in my field. That's going to be. Uh, challenging a aspect to economically as well.
Yes, so if you look at, um, goal one on the screen, um. Under there is pursue a housing cooperative development project. Um, one of the things that the survey turned up is that there, you know, people have a need for affordable housing. They also have a desire to. Um, own their housing. So this is where the cooperative development. Project came in and Steve has been doing a lot of research on cooperative development. Um, I don't know if you want to say something about that now, Steve, or, um, you know, maybe it's going to come up in the future, but. Um, so housing cooperatives did come up.
Yeah, it's certainly if there's any specific questions about the community land trust model or other. Types of, uh, cooperative ownership. Uh, or limited equity ownership, I'd be happy to answer. Um, but, uh, just generally, I think that probably ought to be a different, uh, conversation. More fully, um, but certainly there was a substantial amount of interest, I think. More so than I certainly was expecting through our engagement efforts.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. But I mean, I wonder why I mentioned that because of what's going on with the trucking industry, with the importing and all that, materials to build this stuff. That could hold things up a bit or make a major impact in the cost and everything. I looked at, and who, no one predicted this to happen. Um, what's going on and, you know, that's the reason why this threw that out to see if there's anything that has to be restructured on that.
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't think there's anything in the report that needs to be restructured, but, you know, the supply. You know, the, the goods and materials rates is definitely being felt in the community with some of the larger housing projects going on. Like the DeWitt Building, forty-seven Flat Street, um, their costs, you know. Are up, I think it's twenty percent, um, based on material, goods and materials, so. But don't quote me on that percentage, but it's up substantially. Um, and I've seen it on other projects that Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust has done. Um and I've seen it on other projects that Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust has done and different articles in the newspaper.
Doran, looks like he's got a response to that.
Yeah, no, I mean, there, there was a fluctuation in terms of like, at one point timber prices was up, were up like, you know, two hundred percent. And that of um even just plywood was up like up to a hundred and fifty percent from um. And those uh prices have fluctuated, some of them have come down, but they've all landed uh far higher than, uh in talking to my construction, uh my friends in, in that industry. They've all landed far higher and many of them will not ever go back down, uh at least with the cost of all things. Uh so it just is, it is fair to assume that the cost of uh building will remain higher. And if not, it will go back through more fluxes depending on um distribution and access. So it's, it's only going to be bad to worse in terms of uh building costs.
Yeah, that's the reason why I was asking, Doran, because now that we have these sanctions going on, there's going to be a higher cost even more. And a lot of us are going to be feeling that in many ways. So that's why I didn't know where, that's why I was asking Sue about certain things might be delayed or might be changed because of that.
Yeah, okay, let's get um Dan, see his hand up.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add uh to the, the conversation. Uh it certainly is appropriate that we're talking about affordability of all uh, you know, uh the needs for everyday life as well as long-term investments. Um and, you know, the, the, the unprecedented or the, the crisis nature of this is about, you know, not, it's uh for renters, it's uh being rent burdened uh and building up in many cases huge debts over rent. Um and, you know, there, there are a lot of efforts right now to um, you know, to help um folks with rental assistance. Um but there is a limit uh for many reasons on even that money. Um and uh the, from the state, you know, that's providing rental assistance. Um and so there are a lot of people who are, um and that's just renters, of course. And I'm not to, that's a huge set of problems. Um and then you have the, as you're talking about um building on a piece of property, um it's uh beyond outrageous uh as far as uh some of the, honestly, you guys brought it up, essentially a lot of price gouging going on, quite literally. So uh it's a, it's a real mess. Um I don't think uh I would have any problem with pursuing all of these, of course. But of course, we need to, you know, prioritize what, what, what's the low hanging fruit? What, what can be fixed or, or um what solutions are available? So I just wanted to put that out there that uh, you know, uh the affordable housing segment should, I think, be a big focus of that. And of course, that's a huge swath of the housing market.
Okay. Yeah, I think we all can feel free to um, you know, both make comments and ask questions and also start steering the conversation towards um, you know, what, what in this we want to pull from and, and, and implement. So yeah, I think, thank Dan for making that segue there. Um but maybe before we launch into that fully, I've got a couple kind of observations or ideas that maybe would help me if, if, if people respond to a little bit. One is that um, you know, in the study, it both says that um, you know, we're very much continuing on our, on the trends that we've seen for a long time of smaller households, right? Households getting smaller and smaller. But yet it seemed to me, if I was interpreting it correctly, that, you know, still people's um, you know, leading desire is for a two to three bedroom, single family house. So, you know, I, I think everyone always wants to increase their standards of living, right? So um kind of decreasing in size or rooms may, may be seen as the antithesis of that. But yeah, do people feel like I kind of interpreted that correctly in the document?
Yeah.
Yeah. Doran, Doran, what's, see your hand up.
Sorry, I was, I was just trying to see in the document, it doesn't, it really doesn't talk a lot about second homeownership, um which is kind of the elephant in the room. Uh truly, when we look at the percentage, I think I read somewhere that was like something around uh like upwards of sixty percent, depending on some towns of second, of houses that were second homeowners or something of the sort. Um I need, I, I need to, I'm, I, I, I don't have those exact numbers. I just know they are insanely high and we're not talking so much about uh the second homeownership problem because it is a serious problem. Um uh there are some in, in Dumerson where my parents live, there are some communities where I used to know two of the three of the house owners. And you can walk down those neighborhoods and no one lives there now um full time. That there, it's literally a, a street of second homeowners. Um and it's just sort of like, as soon as that becomes uh the majority, uh you run into the, to the problem of who actually lives here and who can afford to live here. Will Vermont just become more and more the land of just like, of ghost towns of second homeowners coming up here on vacation? Um so it's just like, that is, I, that is the one thing that I feel like this does not have really take out a, as much of an important look at as needs to be said.
Okay, Prudence, you're up next.
Um, you know, I think that the report did address that um to some extent and talked about how it wasn't as big an issue in Brattleboro as some of the other towns. Like in Wyndham County, you know, the towns in the ski, in the resort area towns, which doesn't include Dumerson, I realize. And, and, and Doran has this, you know, um individual experience with it. But it sounds like that's a little bit less of a problem in Brattleboro than some other towns, which I'm, I'm glad. Um I thought the report was really, it was very comprehensive, really interesting, so, so much useful data. Um and I'm, and so it sounds like, is it our job to then make some recommendations to the select board? Is that, is that what our, part of our role is with it? And I, I just also wanted to congratulate the steering committee because I think that you guys, you know, your work resulted in a really good report.
Yeah, to quickly, I know Sue will, but to quickly respond to Prudence. I, I think, I think, you know, um where this goes is any of a number of ways. You know, certainly the, the strategies recommending changes to the land use regs, that's within our purview. You know, I know ultimately that goes to the select board for approval, but that's the first point of work is us and the planning staff on, on something like that. If we, you know, choose to go forward with that. But yeah, it seems like a lot of the other things would be no more than a, you know, a an urging, you know, like a, a statement of support and an urging to act from the planning commission if we decided to go, go through with it. And then still some others, you know, are, are about doing a study or mapping. So that's maybe something that, that, that we could do. But I'll let Sue respond more if she wants to.
Yeah, um no, I mean, I agree. So my intent is to take this to the select board, um hopefully next Tuesday, the agenda's not been set, and get their endorsement or approval of it. I'm not sure which way they'll want to go. And then open up that conversation of, you know, where do we go from here? What are the things that the select board is interested in pursuing? Um because some of it will be department work. There is definitely some things in here that the planning commission could be involved with. I think there's, there's some of the easier things, like creating a housing dashboard is one of the tactics. And um more and more, you know, we get calls in the office or other department gets, gets calls looking for various programs um that they've heard of that are, you know, being discussed at the legislative letter, li- um level. So, you know, something like that could be an easier one to do. Creating new funding streams is probably going to take longer and definitely involve the select board. Um so I think it's, it's both. I mean, I'm interested in hearing what resonates with the planning commission because I think that will be helpful in um presenting that to the select board. And then Tom, I see Kate has her hands up, but if I could just um address Doran's concern over second homeownership and maybe call Steve into it because he just recently did some interesting research. But um so it's a little bit of both of what Prudence said is that Brattleboro doesn't necessarily have the problems that um some of our surrounding towns have. But um I brought up this from the housing um needs assessment that talks about, you know, that there has been a big growth in seasonal home ownerships in, in Brattleboro. So, you know, I, I do, I see where you're coming from, that you don't feel like the report has adequately addressed, you know, the situation. Um and Steve, if you want to kind of share your, or we can come back to it, Tom, whatever you prefer.
Oh, it sounds good. Yeah, Steve. Yeah, um so I'll just briefly say um in terms of the data that was available at the time and probably still available now uh with how long twenty-twenty census data is taken to, to percolate. Um it, it did not seem that there was any substantial amount of second homes in terms of a traditional vacation home in Brattleboro. Countywide, certainly, um in other places up in the mountains, there are uh a substantial number of second homes of that sort. But for some of the data that was included in this report was not disaggregated from the zip code itself. So there are a few outlier towns that are included when that is taken into account. And so that, that can give a bit of a overrepresentation of some of those things that's happening. Um but one thing that we were recently finding in taking another look at the property tax transfer data from the state, um which they have also not reported anything past twenty-twenty. Um in looking at between twenty-seventeen and twenty-twenty and between twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty and comparing the change in out of state uh purchasers of homes, which doesn't necessity, doesn't necessitate a second home, but just um could potentially be associated with that. Uh Brattleboro was a significant outlier compared to any of the other uh communities that saw a numerical uh large increase in those timeframes. And we were effectively the only community that was not associated with um skiing or, or winter sports or directly next to one uh that had such a large increase. So it could be the case that those things are changing. And one thing that is also worth pointing out is that it seems that um housingdata.org, um I think it's dot org, it might be dot gov. Um they recently seem to have updated their short-term rental data. Um at the time that this particular report was written, the site that the data came from uh did not seem to find a significant amount of short-term rentals in the community. Um but now on housingdata.org, uh the last time that I looked at that, which was about a month ago, it seems to have been recently updated and it shows a humongous spike over what was there uh in terms of short-term rentals in Brattleboro. So it certainly is worth taking those anecdotes seriously as potentially representative of something. It's just the data on these kind of things is, is taking quite a long time to actually become clear. So there may be things that we can do in the meantime um to create our own data with tax records to see if there's anything we could learn. Yeah, good. Thank you for that. I think it's good sometimes to stay on the same, same topic and flesh it out a little bit. But sorry for keeping you waiting, Kate. Go ahead.
That's okay. I was, I was actually really just going to touch on the data part. Um, you know, as a Realtor, I do a lot of research on, on who's, you know, for lead generation. And I think that when you look through the tax data, there's out of state owners. But I don't know if you can really differentiate between what's a second home and what's like a, an out of state owner that owns, you know, apartment buildings that are being rented to. And there's also a lot of folks who have moved here and do live here full time, but they've kept out of state addresses and it, or it's been taking a long time to, like you said, catch up. And then I was going to mention the property, the transfer tax data still not being out. And I just think when it does, when we are able to see that data, I think it's going to be very interesting. Um but yeah, it's really hard, it's really hard to, I think, put a number on, on that. And it, it is really impacting our communities. But it's like you said, there's, there's not very much data. So it's, it's hard to like not just be anecdotal about what's going on. That was just my comment.
Yeah, I also just want to quickly say I in no way intend to demonize out of staters as a born and raised flatlander. Um I think that's a really bad road to go down, but it is something that seems to be a, a significant change between the recent years and, and the present, or at least twenty-twenty. So it's worth taking a look at.
So a lot of these things, Stephen, you're saying of this summer getaways, uh like you're, you know, getting something down to Florida, like to get away for the winter or whatever. So they're short term, basically, six months, they're up, then they're back into the big cities after that. This is a rather getting, and I'm considering the Airbnbs too, also factoring those in as well also.
I'm sorry, I wanted to actually add about the short-term rental part. I think a major difference, I think the reason why maybe we're not seeing an increase in the percentage of second homes, but we are seeing an increase in short-term rentals is because people have caught on that they can short-term rental their second home while they're not here. So it's the same type of buyer, but now they're trying to make money as a rental. But it's still their second home.
Uh I guess super briefly to Gary's question, I don't know exactly how housingdata.org operationalized uh short-term rental. And I also, I, I'm not exactly sure how the um proprietary data that the uh Commune Associates had access to, to find it as well. But it's very likely that it's, it's talking about Airbnb and their competitors. Uh I don't think it's talking about um seasonal rentals, um although perhaps we have a small percentage of those.
Thank you, Steve.
I think one of the, one of the tactics is basically to start, start a short-term rental registration in town so that we can begin to get a handle on what it is. It's um, it's probably a step light towards regulating, but really understanding what is the impact of short-term rentals um on the community. So that was one of the tactics in the report.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that back to the, the strategies, the tactics recommended. Um I have a, a few, you know, uh Dan, from what I've been hearing, I heard Dan mention, you know, uh one thing he wants to, he would like to prioritize, that was the affordable housing. And Doran mentioned the um, you know, the issue of second homes, non-residents or, you know, short-term rentals. And Sue, you highlighted uh one of the strategies that's applicable to that. Um I have a couple myself that I thought are within the purview of the planning commission. Um one was um, they brought up this idea of increasing um or, or to make, to make housing, new housing projects, I guess pencil out. There's seemingly an increasing need to rely on public-private partnerships. Um, you know, in, in situations where, you know, the town may um come up with a deal with a private developer in which they either provide lands or property and some deals worked out or there's funding or, you know, certain arrangements with permitting. Um, you know, I couldn't help but notice that that kind of um maybe kind of dovetails a little bit with what I put as a added benefit in that parking lot and garage signage doc where I said, you know, I wrote if the, if parking is done more efficiently and it's, you know, um some pressure can be relieved from certain lots, then it could justify, you know, redeveloping a lot. So for whatever purpose, um and housing could be one of them. So that's something I, you know, I think could potentially be looked into. Um whether that's just throwing things out, you know, the, there's been talk of the municipal center, you know, having some housing through the Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust or, you know, or, or a parking lot becoming housing with shared, you know, the parking study actually recommended for parking to, to look into um shared public-private arrangements with parking lots. So a, a parking lot could have that with housing above it, you know, for example. Or who knows, you know, I often walk by Plaza Park and
Or who knows, you know, I often walk by Plaza Park and I think all that thing is there for is aesthetics and just to look at. No one actually uses it. So maybe maybe a maybe a building could be put there, but. So that's one thing. And then the other thought I had, or the other strategy that kind of jumped out at me, you know, besides the the land use regs, which we're already, you know, deeply going into and considering. And the the bylaw modernization grant is going to be really looking into that is what it say? Yeah. And well, they bring they bring up infill too. And, you know, we're definitely looking into that through that. They said at one point to it advised doing a a return on investment analysis of different types of infill to, you know, I guess with the goal of kind of providing easy an easy resource and clear resource for potential, you know, infill developers or property owners to to know what will what they can build or rehab that won't just be, you know, a money drain, but actually will keep them, you know, financially sound or make them some profit. And it also said to potentially map that throughout town. So I feel like that's similar to what we've, you know, it kind of adds to what we've been doing. Or what we can do, what we have, you know, kind of set before us. Those are my two thoughts beyond what people have said.
Well, I know one thing, Tommy, real quick.
Yeah.
And I was, I know that down there on Flat Street, since Dottie's is gone, and then you also have experienced goods moving out. So that's two big spaces right down there alone. I don't know what's going on with the parking authority down there as well. So that being said, could those also be utilized as well?
Well, Sue is the closest connection to that. So of the people, of the people here, so.
That that I don't know, Gary. I know that there's some rehab that needs to be done to the transportation center. And I know there's been some issues with water leaking in the past. I don't know if it's been fixed. I'm not sure that's, well, first of all, there's a regulatory barrier which in which we don't allow ground floor residential on. And so that's something we can look at, given new trends in retail and office space. But in the downtown, we don't allow first floor residential kind of on those those main streets. And that's because we want to have an active streetscape. We want transparency in the windows and, you know, to make it inviting. Beyond the, I think the other challenge is 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 that an appropriate place for housing, given the construction, the design of the building and and that kind of thing?
I think it's, you know, up to everyone's interpretation and values, right? But it seems to me that, you know, if we want a, you know, walkable community with stores and shops and things like that's that's kind of the the model, the model that we're using is, you know, multi story buildings with first floor generally being retail, commercial, office, whatever, and residences. The sky's the limit above that.
Yeah, well, since Sue did, well, we, and she's right about far as being rehabilitated, the parking garage. Because I believe that was in the in the stage or was talks that was supposed to have been or has been or will be. That's another issue too about, you know, that being stable. And once that issue, I guess, once the parking garage has been upgraded or uptuned, then to have something on top would be more realistic versus an unstable building that's not going to be able to hold that type of housing upstairs.
It's not my understanding that the building is unstable. I think it needs some upgrade.
Well, I've been getting some shake and going over there with my car, so.
Anyway, I'm not gonna, yeah, I.
That's another story.
We'll let engineers discuss that. But I mean, the point is, yeah, I still don't know if, nobody really knows if we could have more levels on it with housing, but housing above would be preferable to housing on the first floor in my mind.
Right, because the goal was just to have it as a parking garage, not to have housing on top.
Let's go with Prudence now. What's your Prudence?
Thanks. Just getting back to, you know, areas that we think are priorities. You know, I like the the workforce focus of the report and some of that data. But also the growth in the senior population and senior housing needs, I think is it should be an important priority. In part because to the, you know, with seniors occupying single family homes that as as people age, they may not be able to keep up. You know, you get sort of, you get a two for one if you get, if you can provide good, appropriate housing for seniors who live in Brattleboro and then choose to move out of their houses, then that provides additional housing. So, you know, I I would, I I hope that the town does move on some of the recommendations for that.
I'll, like I did earlier, kind of bouncing an idea or or an observation amongst all of you, I I'd just like to get a little feedback. You know, obviously increasing the number as well as, you know, and variety, but as well as the quality of housing, right? I mean, who can be against that? I certainly am not. But it seems to me that maybe, you know, this this isn't the best time to, you know, be looking at some some initiatives that increase costs and burden from for making housing, you know, and and improving the quality of housing. It seems like a situation, you know, this is true in the town and at the state level and maybe at the national level too, you know, trying to have your cake and eat it too. And that's not to say that that, you know, you can't do multiple things at once, but I don't know, if, you know, people can comment however they want, but if people want to respond to that, I think that might help me develop my thinking a little bit. But yeah, we can stick with, oh, Sue.
What I would say at the state level is a lot of the programs that are coming through are the federal ARPA dollars, which yes, of course, we're all going to pay for in some way, but they've already been approved at the federal level. So they're coming through the state. So there's, there's a lot of that going on. I think what we choose to do locally is, you know, a fair a fair question, you know, creating a housing opportunity fund or something like that. Maybe that comes from repayments to the community development block grants that are given out. Right now, you know, they're used for housing, they're used for. We have a small loan program for for rental rehabs. It's not very competitive. So, you know, maybe that could be tweaked. Maybe there's a set aside portion because right now it's can be used for economic and housing purposes, but it usually is used for economic development purposes. Although I should say Groundworks has gotten funding for their new facility on South Main Street out of that. And other housing projects have as well. And then the other thing to keep in mind is that there, you know, I don't know what the select board will choose to do with the local ARPA funds. So we could advocate one way or another.
Yeah, Doran.
I was just gonna say also, just the idea of, obviously, it's it's outside of the town purview of what can be done, but like, you know, the push towards, I don't know, even if it's greater community support and or going towards more state support for rent control. If we're looking at the segment that's helping, helping with the cost of housing. Because right now that just the 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 info, just with all things that have driven up costs, the like reading about that, the majority of people can pay around $800 and the amount of rentals that are actually $800 in Brattleboro is, I don't know if I know of any. So I just think that that's the just what else can be done in that realm. And also, and like you said, the renting registry is some type of cap on on Airbnb for for those, for those rentals within, you know, a a a more closed in area as in a small town, or sorry, a bigger town of Bradville.
Dan.
Yeah, hi, Dory. Thanks for bringing that, you know, concept up. And I think it's a great example, just to because we're covering so many different issues in the housing study. It's a good way to talk about the potential for unintended consequences in the housing system. So there are feedback loops that that feed other loops and so forth and so on. And it's such a complicated set of interacting systems, right? The ones that that cause prices to go up for one thing. I mean, that's just one issue. And rent control is a is a great one to discuss. And I think there's really, and we we can, you know, argue about the the details. But I think we can all agree that it's it's sort of one of those solutions that's held up. But it it unfortunately, and this is only based on, you know, I wish it were not true type of category of things. But unfortunately, it doesn't. At least there have been some studies that have said that essentially it really is inoperable as a, you know, in a, especially in a situation that we find ourselves in. In some cities, it it has been tried in many different ways. And, Dory, I wish it, I wish it were a solution, I really do. But we can argue, you know, how how much there already is rent control effectively in in a in a market based system. I mean, I know it's it's out of control, as you said, right, relative to fair market rents that what they should be. But and we need to be, you know, really careful about, you know, saying that there is one solution for that matter at all, because there are all these interacting loops constantly happening that are, you know, one of the effects is 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 housing price. But the quality, as Tom brought up, I mean, that alone for health and safety concerns, okay? I mean, that alone is 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 such a a series of issues that need to be dealt with, right? And unfortunately, like, that's a feedback loop where if you pay, I mean, if you pay, if you put less money into the system, you you simply have less to maintain the properties that are that are available, owned and rented, right? So it it's like these things spiral out of control. I just wanted to say that. But but it's a good topic to bring up, Dory.
Sorry, if I just, I just wanted to say, I appreciate that, Dan. And also, it's not within our town purview. It's that as a Dylan's Law estate, that has to go through the state house. Anyways, I don't know what can be done in terms of a even like a a like fight against price gouging, which is just a very common thing, especially right now with rentals. There is just a handful of those rentals and you see them that as soon as as like other landlords see certain landlords renting an apartment for $1,500, then generally the price of most rentals in the area, if they believe they can get away with it, will will rise. You know, to that point, also just in terms of like, yeah, what can be done to maintain the houses that are falling apart? I have, I have friends living in a house that is near derelict, but they can't leave because they can't afford anything else. So that is like, you know, like they're taking, they're taking the bad over the terrible of not having housing. So it's like there, there's definitely sort of that could, that is also just another aspect is that the ones that are the lowest are the in such derelict repair, but folks can't afford to leave. Or they're leaving, they're leaving living more people to the to a smaller house because that's what they can afford. So even the $800 is high for most people to be able to do. I cannot afford an $800 rental by myself, maybe between my partner and I, that would even be a push. So I live in a house with five others. That is sort of just a natural act of where we are.
It's 7:26, so I'd like, you know, if there's any remaining ideas or, you know, priorities to bring up, I'd like just to get those in quick. But also just ask Sue, is this, is this what you're looking for? Do you think this is a good course for us to to kind of mention these ideas? And that's good enough for now. And then, you know, maybe we'll work them into agendas.
I do think this is helpful, particularly as I take it to the select board and then kind of get you know, know what the planning commission, you know, what resonates with them, hearing what resonates with the select board and, you know, being able to maybe make some of those connections. I just wanted to real briefly say, I dropped in a link to the city of Cambridge, their housing programs. They have, you know, their city, they've got other resources. But they have some interesting programs that, you know, could maybe with some thought be adapted to a smaller town. You know, it's an, there's an affordable housing purchase pool. There's affordable rental units and that kind of thing. So things that can help the residents that live here that, you know, are not rent controlled, but maybe give some priority to the people that are here. So I just think they'll be interesting to look at as we move forward.
Okay, great. Yeah, if there's nothing else on this topic, let's move on to the, talking about the tiny home infill potential. Steve drafted that memo, I believe, so. Want to take it away, Steve, with with anything you want to add to it or to start us off?
Sure, yeah. Let me just pop that up. Primarily for that drawing that's in it, which took me a lot longer than I'd like to admit. Okay. Is everyone able to see?
Okay, can you make it bigger for Gary?
Yeah, let's see.
Thank you.
I can read your mind, Gary, remember.
Does anyone know how to get Googled? Oh, okay. So you can just, who knew? You can just do the pinch thing. All right.
Perfect.
Okay, is that too blurry? We good?
Crystal.
Okay, so, yeah, it, there was certainly some interest expressed after I sent this out. And the community has has come to us on quite a few occasions with interest in tiny house development. And I'll say, as soon as I sent out the memo on Friday evening, I was thinking, I really hope that didn't come off as as reading too harsh. I think oftentimes the the enthusiasm about tiny house development, whenever we express some nuance from from a planning perspective, it might read as maybe negative about the concept, but hopefully this was even killed enough. So the intent of this memo was to explain that we ought to conceptualize this need of 500 additional housing units in terms of dwelling units, just as a conceptual idea, rather than in any given specific built form necessarily. And think about how can we fit 500 dwelling units into the community in a variety of different delivery methods? And for us, as we said, housing strategies through our work as the planning department and planning commission, we should care about scalable, efficient models of housing delivery. Whereas the public, when creating market housing, can certainly try whatever their desired form is and see if the market can bear it. And we shouldn't stand in the way of that with regulatory barriers unless we think that there is a reason to. So essentially, there were several examples of specific contexts where tiny homes are examples of specific contexts where tiny homes are potentially quite useful in the literature that's available. So one of them is essentially to use as an ADU on an existing built out home site, sort of like the one that you can see on the left of this diagram. So if that orange ADU didn't exist and there was simply a gap there. So like one of our lots in town, if there was never any sort of detached garage or carriage house like there are in a lot of our Victorian and pre-World War II suburban homes. If for some reason you've got extra space in your setbacks, but you don't have a outlying building that might easily be created into an ADU with a retrofit, then plugging in and a tiny home in that context is is quite useful and quite frequently successful around the country. An additional use that is widely touted as as very useful is as temporary supportive shelter for people who are experiencing homelessness. However, in all of that literature, permanence was not being suggested, although certainly I've seen headlines recently of of pilot programs that are being still being figured out around the country that seem to potentially suggest permanence. But nothing fleshed out enough to to really report on data from. So essentially, what really this all boils down to is that when folks come to us with interest, they often are excited that we don't particularly have barriers in our regulatory requirements that would preclude tiny homes. And and a lot of that also has to do with fair housing. That anywhere that a mobile home is, or anywhere that a single family home is is permissible, then a mobile home is permissible. And a tiny home is permissible. What tends to happen is a just the market will not bear single new construction tiny homes. And so co-locating to spread out those flat costs that I described in the memo, namely land value and the plugging into existing municipal utilities or having to get private septic and well, which I don't mention in here. Those things are made. That doesn't pencil out, we've seen so far, in terms of one single tiny home. And so essentially, at the point that you've got co-located tiny homes on one lot, there is, I certainly have a difficult time coming up with any way that that is a more efficient delivery of housing than other traditional forms of wood framed construction that do share walls or are otherwise condensed. And those types of housing would certainly provide a lower cost per square foot. So I will quit rambling because I see that Doran has a question.
First of all, I just wanted to thank you very much for this is a very, it's a very adequate and very well just well written description of the world of tiny houses. Obviously, it's very close to my heart because I'm building one with my partner very slowly because our our funds are low and the cost of building is high. I was just saying that the so many people of my generation, which is I'm in my mid 30s and lower, this is now actually how people are starting to dream about the the kind of, at least in my community, that the dream of the 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 home is now becoming the dream of a cluster of homes with your friends and community members or family together. It seems to be more and more possible. And also, the idea of building, being able to build your own home for under or upwards to $50,000, our tiny home will probably come in at around $25,000 with lots of used woods and used materials. So it is in terms of people who are building their own or working with even a smaller construction entity, there is the opportunity for building something of your own and and thus have also the ownership of where it lives when it's on wheels. So I think just in terms of, when we look at like that, like in terms of cost effectively, I am 36 with working the jobs I have, I will never be able to afford a house in Vermont at the cost, at the rate that it is between myself and my partner's incomes. So the kind of we are left with if we want to own something of our own and not be renters our entire life, we build something on wheels, we'll still need to find land to hold it, which you will still have to rent or still have to figure out a program with. But I really appreciated this this document because I feel like it did get to the heart of tiny homes. And anything we can do to deregulate or to make it easier for tiny homes. I do think this is a very honest way for moving forward into the future, that the big old farmhouses of the past being just in the hands of one family is to, you know, how else can we house so many people that might need it?
Yeah, so I'll just super briefly respond to that and then let Dan chime in as well. I think specific to that concern, I certainly hope that I captured the sympathy to that viewpoint. And certainly, being a a young person who doesn't own a home as well, I completely understand the the sentiment. And I can see where folks would presume certain things about which built forms can be owned and which built forms may not provide ownership possibilities. I hope that I didn't push too far on the potential social values that might underpin some of our assumptions about those things that I do still think are valid to reflect on as some of the reasons for this particular trend being prevalent. But ultimately, I think it's difficult to tease apart whether that whether tiny homes themselves offer specific benefits over a traditional trailer or mobile home in terms of cost savings, if if the land rent is the the model that you're going with. However, I think what's even more potentially useful is oftentimes, and I don't think this did make it into the memo, the tiny home communities that have been successful at creating affordability have done so, I think, regardless of the built form choice and specifically because they used a community land trust model. And so that community land trust with shared equity ownership is what caused the land prices to be low enough or dispersed enough to make the tiny homes pencil out as I think essentially any built form of housing would in that case. And specifically, I think a lot of this memo is just sort of theoretical, maybe pedantic interest in in what's the most efficient way to disperse houses. But if we had a larger conversation with folks who have an interest in downsizing their housing units so that they might access a form of property ownership, to explain that there are these other models of attached homes with cooperative ownership, condo even, I think elicits a understanding of needing to pay fees and not owning necessarily within the community. But co-op buildings are certainly something that could be pursued. And as far as I've been able to tell from the current state statutes aren't prohibited. But I think that bears further research. I know that the Champlain Land Trust is a bit gun shy to do multifamily because they think that the the law, either federal or state, is difficult to figure out how to successfully run that. And so that potentially does lead to tiny home clustering being advantageous, if that is something that can't be workable. So I think the bottom line here that I don't think I did a good enough job explaining in this memo, is that really it's that land ownership piece that could be the key. And so whatever built form is pursued is secondary a bit to that because the major problem there is the the cost of land is one of the major drivers of the unaffordability of virtually any housing type just can't pencil out without some sort of subsidy at this moment because our our housing market is so warped at the moment. But I've been talking for way too long, so I should let Dan go.
Sure, thanks, Steve. I I think you struck a really good balance with with what you have here and thanks for for doing it. It's, you know, I think I just wanted to try to draw a couple of specifics, draw from what you have written and and to just kind of, you know, say that it is a worthwhile creative solution, of course. And it's not necessarily new, you know, we've had covered wagons and we've had all kinds of, you know, tiny house forms of housing, you know. But the penciling out thing is really one of the key things that I think is worth thinking about, you know, that we talk about, you know, the you're talking primarily about purchase prices and and looking at, you know, how to actually move forward with with any type of form of housing in terms of development. And one major thing that I don't think has been mentioned, and I I just, I think it needs to be put on the table. The major piece that doesn't pencil out is the the fact, unfortunately, that anything without a foundation is a depreciating asset. It's a it's a trailer on wheels and it can be a very high quality trailer. But if you put 50 grand into that trailer, unfortunately, it's not going to be worth 50 grand in 10 years, right? So the penciling out is the investment piece. And so as Steve was talking about, the infrastructure pieces that go into the land itself, that becomes obviously very valuable. And then putting a permanent structure, even on a small foundation as an accessory dwelling unit or even an addition to an existing structure. It's unfortunately, you know, if you put 25 grand into a into an actual, I mean, you know, a a structure on land, it's it's going to appreciate in value, for one thing. And that's that's unfortunately, the name of the game with with housing and with any type of property. Really. So I mean, you know, land land property. The other piece I wanted to get at, you know, and again, you put a lot of great pieces into the the comparison of different housing types. But besides the, you know, we're talking about, unfortunately, another big piece of housing that we don't talk about enough is the not in my backyard sort of syndrome, right? There there are locational and very, you know, granular, let's say, issues with people living in close proximity to one another and and houses that are attached, like townhouses or, you know, apartments above and below, side by side and so forth. A lot of livability issues come with that. And that is why we have a lot of, you know, there has been at least a one solution was con, I think that the the our term for it is condos, I would consider it a cooperative form of of living, you know. And it is purchasable, you know, so it can be, it's an investment that is gonna appreciate, you know. Yeah, so I just wanted to put that out there. I think the the fact that we're talking about this is a huge plus, by the way. You know, no matter what comes out of it. And, yeah, I just wanted to, you know, put it, I think the the penciling, the financial piece of this is the killer. It it's really unfortunate, you know, because I think you do get a lot of enthusiastic folks who think, oh, yeah, that sounds great. I can do it myself. I'll buy a kit or something, right? And it just, it doesn't, for so many people, it doesn't work out, unfortunately.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. I don't think I got that well enough in this memo as well, or at least wasn't feeling confident enough to make that statement necessarily. But certainly, I was seeing in literature that almost all the time it is depreciative, at which point the the cost differential with a traditional mobile home is hard to justify for a lot of folks. So I think it's, ultimately, I want to make sure I reiterate well enough that as a mechanism for access to property ownership for folks, that is far more attainable than a single family detached house, as well as more advantageous in terms of planning best practice. If we can get folks together through outreach to let them know the possibilities about cooperative land and structure ownership, then potentially folks could get together and figure out how to build row housing. And certainly, I think a little bit of digging on sound walls and other things to assuage people's worries about hearing their neighbors and the other typical complaints about attached housing. That could go a long way in getting folks to realize just because tiny houses specifically might not be the greatest mechanism for achieving a more democratized homeownership possibility in 2022. Attached housing and maybe even the Boston triple decker could potentially be replicated in in the neck of the woods as something that folks could own cooperatively and and be able to have an appreciating asset, although in a limited sense because of that shared equity. So so profit for the individual is not as as central in the community land trust model. And super quickly, I don't think I mentioned, but I I meant to point out that one particular benefit that's often touted of tiny homes is is environmental sustainability. But I don't find that this is necessarily the case because of the the surface area of of heat loss and the number of individual heating units that need to be run at the same time to be able to control the climate of that many small units. So if it makes sense, hopefully this does. I am not a geometry whiz, but the house all the way to the right, if we can think about how many of those spaces share part or all of their surfaces with another unit. And then think about how much more of that would be exposed to the elements if they were all separated. I think that point is worth bringing up when it's, when we're talking about single family detached homes far more than it is maybe feels a little unfair to harp on tiny homes in that way. Because they don't need to be heated with as much intensity. But I think that that is a major benefit of the efficiency of condensed housing as such as this. So I'm not sure that I got that well enough in the document.
See Doran's hand up. I'd like to, you know, try to start wrapping this up because we're getting against our time limit. And we could push off the last agenda item to another meeting. But I have, Doran, do you either want to respond directly? Do you have something pressing or yeah, go ahead?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that if we're looking at the gaining of equity, tiny houses, you're right, may not actually be the way to go. But that's actually not what I care about, nor my partner. It's actually the gaining of your own entity to live in and being able to do so with a pocket of of money that is less than almost any other type of housing. So I think if we actually look at it at a very practical level of like people that just want to have something of their own with the idea that maybe it will depreciate over time. But we you've come, you've culled them together about it would be, say, 20 to 40,000 dollars and ability to purchase either, I mean, either, you know, a a single wide trailer or to build your own tiny house. or to build your own tiny house or to have it built with a local carpenter or whatever. It's true, you are not necessarily building something that's going to build you something that will increase in equity over time, but you are building something of your own. And I just don't think we can discount that enough, especially in such a crazy housing market.
There might be a possibility for a little bit more staff research. I'm not sure the data necessarily exists yet, but I could see where dispersing some tiny houses on foundations in a community land trust model to specifically add that housing choice of very low cost barrier to entry in a community with a lot more density around it. So that maybe that depreciation doesn't happen as quickly or at all. If that's the case, certainly we'd not be wanting to, you know, exclude a perfectly valid way to achieve affordability if it can work out that way.
Yeah, Dan.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly say, I, by the way, didn't list the many positives, the many advantages of having a tiny house on wheels, by the way. Huge benefits for different stages of life and so forth. I'm a huge fan, don't get me wrong, right? But this is like, you're talking about, you know, everything scales up from when you make that choice, you know. And it's good to have sort of, you know, realistic expectations about it is kind of my thinking. This is, I mean, it's essentially why people don't go through it, like they have the idea. Doran, I'm a big fan, keep going with it. I'm sure it's a project, right? I've been there, by the way.
Assuming we don't run out of money and come to the same conclusion by the end, truly.
Well, you know, yeah, this is the problem. This is the builder's problem. You know, it's constant. But, you know, it's definitely, as I said, I mean, this is not a new concept at all, right? Covered wagons, I mean, just take that for a simple example. But there are so many mobile forms of housing that humans have used throughout the millennia. So it's a, you know, but as Steve was also saying, heating one of them in our climate is no fun at all. I mean, you're talking about the need for expensive insulation, first of all, if you want to just talk the expense. And then for actually maintaining a system that works is difficult. Can be very, very, so, you know, going down south when it's cooler here, you know, if you have the mobility, that's awesome, too. So anyway, there are lots of pluses on the mobile side of things.
For what it's worth, 25,000 materials cost is at least 15,000 lower than anything else I've seen data on anyone being able to achieve, so.
Yeah, you're doing great if you're at 25. That's awesome.
Could be, I don't know how much it does.
On this, on this in the last few minutes that we have, and sorry to yell like that. But I encourage you guys to chit chat at the bar all about these things later. Yeah, I want to, I want to just bring it as to what sort of action, you know, we can move this to. I think I heard Steve, you said that, I don't know how much this was like saying what could be done in theory versus what we can do. You said something to the effect of we could educate and provide info to people to help them understand how to initiate cooperative living. Is that actually something you think that we can, the planning commission or planning department can move on with?
If you're asking me, I certainly think that there's a piece directly in the Housing Action Plan that dovetails very nicely with that. And I think there's lots of overlap between the aspirations that are there for many folks who want to develop a tiny house and the effect that they're looking for. It might be even actually more achievable with some of these types of cooperative developments. So I think first staff and potentially commissioners will need to do some more digging to figure out exactly what is achievable by statute. And I think roping in Champlain would be crucial, potentially even maybe inviting them to speak. They're not only the preeminent experts on that in the area. They are far and away the number one largest in the country. Dudley Street Neighbors in Boston might also be interesting to ask for their advice. So I think they do substantially more multifamily than Champlain does at this point. So more research, if there's a charge to staff to do some more research in the meantime, and then come back around with that. I think that sounds great to build into a future community engagement effort to try to just build awareness of those models and maybe also work with Wyndham and Windsor to understand, have they tried that? How has it worked? What can we do to best facilitate that with them and the community?
Okay. Well, how about, I think that cooperative thing, since, you know, Gary mentioned it too, back when we were talking about the Housing Action Plan, Rex. How about if all those, all those priorities that we all mentioned, you know, are captured in the minutes that you all are going to write up? And then at next, you know, we'll have a month to see those minutes and to think about them. And then at next meeting, we'll, you know, that will help us kind of decide which ones are meant for the flat board or which ones we can act on and we can decide then. I wanted to add one thing or ask one thing about the, in the last paragraph, Steve, of your memo. And you say that the, at the moment, the only significant barrier on our own regulatory side, our own regulatory side to those who would like to get into tiny home development is the acreage based density cap in rural residential and rural zoning zones, rural zoning districts. So for everyone, that's like one housing, one dwelling unit per 1.5 acres or 1.3 acres, I think. So, but I'm wondering, is another substantial barrier the fact that we only allow one primary dwelling per lot? And before that's answered, I know that there's an exception to that, which is the planned unit developments. So someone can go through that process to have more than one primary dwelling, primary building on a lot. And so as far as those five PUDs go, which you all remember from last meeting, it seems like there's just one that fits, potentially fits a tiny home community, which is the cottage cluster. So my question is, I don't expect you, Doran, to have that right in front of you or memorized, but you being someone who's in a, a community or, you know, you have friends who aspire to this. Does our current cottage cluster PUD allow for what the tiny home community wants? And so I don't know if that can be answered now or something to think about, but yeah.
Yeah, I would say it, depending on how many units you want, no, it doesn't. Because if you're doing the cottage cluster in the rural residential, then you're still, we didn't get rid of density caps in the rural residential and the rural zoning districts. So you are still having to, you know, meet that standard. And if you're looking at a non-acre lot or, you know, or less, like a four acre lot, you know, you're getting two units. And then you get a, so, so I would say that it's, it is a big barrier because the PUD is the way you get more numbers. But I think you're right, the primary structure, one primary structure is also, could also be a problem to having multiple. Because typically, like in the residential neighborhood, we'll consider a tiny house as an accessory dwelling unit if one doesn't exist. But yeah, if it's a multifamily home and somebody wants to put a tiny house back there or if they want two back there, then that's going to be a barrier. So you did identify another barrier.
So certainly it's something we could work on, but it's, we also have this bylaw modernization grant, which is happening. And so those things could potentially be completely resolved by the consultant, right? Okay. So we can always keep that in mind, I guess, and not forget it, but assuming that we want to do that.
Yep.
If there's nothing else pressing about the tiny home memo, I think we should just skip that, that solar, that DRB review criteria proposal that I made up for next meeting, maybe. I know Gary wanted to, I mean, but if people want to keep going, we can, yeah, seeing ahead, yeah. I don't feel the need, it's nothing pressing. People can review it and direct any questions towards me and we'll bring it up again. I think maybe we could just take a couple of minutes. I know, Gary, you wanted to bring something up about our meetings. And Sue, you said something earlier about, you know, Zoom or in person.
Oh, yes, yeah, I did know, well, since we already got through the first day of masks, we don't have to have masks, but people are still abusing common sense. I guess the next step now with the state itself lifting itself. So that being said, that the select board have already given us that commission now that masks are no longer needed, but still use that good old fashioned common sense if you choose to meet in person or not, or wear one or not. Is that something that is, we can move forward on to meeting in person? I don't know, just with this particular committee, I'm sure all the committees, I met already in person with CPCC at the library. So I don't know how the municipal building is handling it on their end as far as in person. So I just want to get some ideas or feedbacks and thoughts of anybody or staff or the town still allowing in-person meetings.
We are allowed to meet in person, unmasked or masked, whatever personal preference is, in the municipal center. If we wanted to meet in person, I've kind of committed to keeping a hybrid model because I think, you know, it might work for some commissioners, but it also might work better for the public, which we generally don't have participation from, but we'd like to keep encouraging it. And we could also, you know, arrange to meet in the select board meeting room. So there is more space there as well, so we could spread out.
Yeah, could we briefly go around and people say, I guess, well, they can say whatever they want, but maybe, you know, just briefly, the way you personally want to meet or will meet and also, or just, and also just what you're, what you would prefer, what you're willing to do or.
Just get a pulse.
Exactly, get a pulse. So that way, I mean, we don't, we could vote on what we're going to do next meeting or based on the pulse here. You know, I can decide for next meeting, but I saw Dan's hand going up.
Yeah, just quickly, I think if we can commit to a hybrid model that allows all of us the flexibility as well as the public, then I'm all for it. And I would like to try to meet, you know, in person if possible, but honestly, sometimes it doesn't, doesn't work out. So I can, you know, sometimes by this time of the day, I'm all zoomed out. So many in a row, but I, you know, that may be a good reason to get out of the house and go to a meeting, or it might be a good reason just because I have, just to, because I'm already here, might as well be on Zoom.
So, so back, oh, yeah, Dan, Doran, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I agree with the hybrid model. It's just been so accessible. I think it makes it very easy for folks that, who are either work at home or have trouble leaving the home for whatever reason, to be able to jump in. And I look forward to being able to hopefully make a couple of meetings, but it's made it so accessible for me. Appreciate it.
Yeah, Prudence, Prudence agrees. Oh, Prudence froze, but I just saw a thumbs up, so. Okay. Yeah, I agree with the, oh, go ahead, Prudence.
I just agree with Dan and Doran. I prefer to be in person, but like I'm going to be in Waterbury for the next few. So hybrid is really, I think the flexibility of hybrid is really helpful.
Yep. Yeah, I agree with hybrid as well. I like meeting in person more. I personally live downtown and it's good to get my eyes off the computer. So I like going in person, but you know, there is occasionally the situation where Zoom is more convenient. I prefer that. But also, you know, if we're doing hybrid, I don't know if it's, if it's a great idea, you know, to have just a single, you know, commissioner or one or two just always being there in person and just everyone else always being on Zoom. I mean, or maybe not. I mean, that means that staff, if anyone's going to be in person, then that means that that one or two of the staff members then have to be there, whereas they otherwise wouldn't have to be. I don't know. I mean, if we get a pulse of like, how many would show up in person next month, for example, if we have that option?
Can I just say one thing, Tom, and then I guess you can go with your.
Checking the pulse.
With your doodle. I think the new norm, whatever norm is, is just, it's going to be hybrid, just not just here, but everywhere. I guess once we get past that point with in person, which sometimes it helps, too, because a lot of people that are away cannot, I mean, not just because of Omicron, but can would like to participate, be on the committee, can just chime in too. Versus in person, well, this person couldn't show up to a physical meeting because they're away. So I'm thinking this is going to be, I think I prefer a hybrid versus just in person or just Zoom. I think it should be a collaborative thing for a lot of people because people can't, some people can't get out of their homes. Some people have kids. I mean, there's a lot of factors involved. So I think hybrid is now going to be our new permanent norm, not just here, but nationally for a lot of people who work at home.
I will add for a little clarification, though, that, you know, right now we're not hybrid, right? We, the state legislature allowed us to not have, not have to comply with having a physical location as of last month. And I think that law stands for like a whole year. So we don't need to do hybrid. We could be Zoom. And we don't need to do in person if it's just going to be unnecessary and, you know, no one's going to show up. So that's what I'm trying to gauge, Sarah.
I think maybe in between all of this is, you know, maybe staff and Tom can decide like, you know, for an upcoming meeting, if being in person would be beneficial, like we have to put the map out or, you know, then like that's a hybrid, but then it's a lot, most of it's just going to be sort of conversation, then have it be Zoom. So maybe not always having the hybrid option, but when it would be beneficial to be looking at stuff, you know, sort of implying that ideally people could be in person for that specific meeting, but there will also be a Zoom option.
Okay. Yeah, sounds reasonable. Maybe what we'll do is check in with an email like days before the next meeting, you know, before the agenda is published. I don't know. Great. I think I got a decent pulse from everyone. Let me know if there's any thoughts you have after this meeting. Take a motion to adjourn. I'm not going to call it because we did have an item on the, on the agenda that we're skipping. So I think we have to do it the motion way.
All right, motion that we adjourn.
Their second? Okay. All in favor? Great. Okay, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
All right, people.
Good night.